All right. Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the regular meeting for the Board of Alderman for Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a silent prayer. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic of its citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every even justice law.
All right. This evening, Mike is feeling under the weather, so he's not going to be with us. And I will do the roll call. So Alderman Bernelli.
Present.
Alderman Cavalo.
Present.
Alderman DiGio Von Carlo.
Here.
Alderman Dorso.
Here.
Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Markey. Alderman Matthews.
Present.
Alderman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
Alderman Nugent.
Present.
Alderman Roman.
Present.
Alderman Salvio.
Present.
Alderman Weaver.
Here.
Alderman Zimmerman. And I am here. So we have 13 present. We have a quorum. And just for the record, Zimmerman is also feeling under the weather, so she won't be with us this evening either. With that, the first item on our agenda would be a presentation, the WBDC Small Business Technical Assistance and Grants Program. Fran Pastor, the CEO of the Women's Development Council Incorporated. Mike, you're going to lead it off?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So just very quickly, there's two items on your agenda this evening related to a program that the city is looking to fund for a Women's Business Development Council, Small Business Technical Assistance and Micro Grant Program. On the micro grant side, from the standpoint of overseeing the administration and distribution of micro grants that would be awarded to Waterbury-based small businesses. So the first item, or the two correlating items, is a request for an ARPA funds transfer of 1.5 million to fund, provide funding for this program. And the second item is the subrecipient agreement with the Women's Business Development Council. So we do believe that this is a really ideal and effective use of the city's ARPA money to really assist with a focus, assist small businesses, but with a focus on women and minority-owned businesses here in the city of Waterbury. It's both, again, an education component as well as a micro grant program to assist with the small businesses, both from a startup as well as from an expansion of existing businesses standpoint. So this evening, Fran is ill, but we do have with us this evening Brenda Thicket with the Women's Business Development Council, who is here this evening to provide you with a presentation, overview of the other programs and the services to be provided.
Thank you. As Mike said, my name is Brenda Thicket, and I'm here with my colleague, Alicia DeSena. And we are really excited to share the proposal with you.
Can I just ask you maybe to bring that microphone down a little?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, great. So we're really excited to be here today to share the proposal with you. I'm going to move through the materials pretty quickly in the interest of time, but if you have any questions, you know, we would love to engage and answer your questions. So we are the Women's Business Development Council. The mission of our organization is to strengthen and support economic prosperity for women through entrepreneurial services that create and grow jobs across the state. We've been in operation in Connecticut for 25 years. We started in Stanford and then established an office in New Haven in 2007, and then in New London in 2018. And we're really excited about the prospect of adding an office in Waterbury. We provide services across the state and have, for many years, and have a history of serving businesses in Waterbury, but are very excited to get, form an even deeper partnership with the city and serve more businesses here. Over our existence, we have helped over 12,000 businesses get started, create and support over 25,000 jobs, and help clients access almost 30 million in capital across the state. We serve, almost half of our business, of our clients, 48% are minority-owned businesses, and over 60% are low to moderate income. We serve businesses at every stage, so people with an idea that want to start a business but aren't really sure how to get started, to those that are, have a clear idea and know exactly what they want to do, to those that are getting going and then that are established and have been in business longer. There are essentially four pillars of what we do as an organization. The primary focus for us is education, so business education. We have business training. As well as other topics, we provide mentoring. And then we have a team of business advisors that provide one-on-one business. ... along their journey. The second pillar is the invest pillar. These in combination that we would like to partner with the city to do. We supply grants to businesses to help them, to help them grow their businesses as well as to get started. And then technical assistance as well to help them access other forms of capital. The third thing that we do is we look to cultivate networks among entrepreneurs and among the business community. And then we also advocate for women-owned businesses and small businesses broadly. In terms of the type of classes we offer, we offer startup business planning classes, how to hone your business concept and your business model, up to how to write a business plan. We have intro accounting classes, how to get started on QuickBooks, sales and marketing, operations, contracting. We also have a deep library, e-library, that entrepreneurs can access on demand at any time. And as I mentioned, we have a team of one-on-one business advisors, and we also provide mentoring. I'm going to turn it over to Alicia to share a bit more detail about our grant programs.
Thank you. So since 2020, we started making grants, and we have given away over 500 grants since then. 1.5 million have been distributed through our Equity Match Grant Program and 4 million distributed through our Child Care Grant Program. Should I keep going? Okay. Okay. So the impact of our small business grants, a year after funding the small businesses, we engage with them for a year afterwards. And this is through quarterly surveys where we get our impact data. So in the 12 months since receiving the grant, we have 55 businesses who have reached that point. You can see that 83% of them have increased their revenues after receiving the grant, 63% have increased profits, and then half of them have hired employees. So from those 98 businesses in those first four rounds, which has been about a year, we've helped create 119 net jobs across 56 companies. And then additionally, because our program is an educational program as well, it helps people go out for grants afterwards to feel confident enough to do so. And in doing that, you know, they have capital infusions totaling over 1.2 million in additional grants after receiving hours. We have funded a couple businesses through this grant program in Waterbury. So one of them is Logo My Promo. Oneelia, she creates signs. She had used a grant for software to upgrade her business and streamline her productivity. And then we have Hair by Jennifer Marie, also located in Waterbury. And, you know, with salons, they were hit really hard during the pandemic. So she had used her grant to fund more marketing efforts, get more people in the door. And now I'll turn it back over to Brenda for the childcare.
So in addition to serving all small businesses across sectors, we also have a program that focuses on businesses in the childcare industry. We do this in partnership with the Office of Early Childhood from the state and provide the same programs that we do to any businesses in any sector but focused on the childcare industry. Through this program, we have educated over 1,000 clients to support over 10,000 childcare slots. And we have helped these childcare businesses access 8 million in capital, 4 million that was from WBDC grants, and four that was other sources of capital. There are a bunch of examples in the deck of childcare businesses that we have funded in the city of Waterbury. So I encourage you to read through them and hear, and see how services from WBDC have helped them support their businesses and help them grow. This one here, Rays of Sunshine, she has done over 11 hours of training and advising and received a grant to help her get started as well as to support technology. So I'm just going to flip through these, but there's lots of great stories of local businesses. In terms of our track record in the city of Waterbury, we have served 157 businesses in the city over the last five years, 60% of which were minority-owned. As Alicia mentioned, we made two Equity Match Grants to Waterbury businesses for over 16,000 and 34 childcare grants for 273,000 to City of Waterbury businesses. And as you will have seen from our proposal, that we will commit to provide technical assistance to at least 50 Waterbury businesses each year, and award up to 2010 in grants to at least 20 small businesses each year for the next five years. So what our proposal is, is to expand our technical assistance counseling workshop and courses to small businesses in the city. Hire four roles based here, two that would be focused on our statewide programs and two that would be focused on Waterbury businesses. We will also expand our grant program specifically to businesses in Waterbury, deliver our technical assistance programs in the childcare industry to more childcare businesses in Waterbury, and then open an office here. We are looking at a location on Bank Street, which we are really excited about. So in terms of the, where the, how the money from the city of Waterbury, 160 would be going to grants to small businesses. 140 would be going to fund our operations and the technical assistance. We have also been able to get Webster Bank to agree to give us 60,000 each year to support operating expenses. And then WBDC will contribute money that we have raised from other sources, 50,000 for grants and 200,000 for operating expenses. So that was a very quick run-through. What questions can we answer?
All right. We'll get, when the items come up, we'll have more opportunity for some questions and discussion if anyone has any, so.
Terrific.
Thank you. All right. With that, the next item on the agenda, would be public speaking. So anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with our city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit. I'll give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff?
First speaker tonight from 146 Highland Avenue, Alan Bordaze. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I'm Alan Bordaze. I am from Torrington. I'm a registered engineer. I own some property at 146 Highland. And last year, we had two instances where water from Shirley Street flooded our property into the building. And it's a office building with doctors and dentists. And we had damages. We reported the damages to the city of Waterbury. City of Waterbury said they have no liability because we didn't report it before it happened. And I was very disappointed to be very candid with you, and I understand this problem has actually been going on for a while. Recently, about three weeks ago, we had another incident where water entered the building from two locations, one of them from, again, Shirley Street, and one from Ledge Side Avenue. Now, what's interesting is last time we had this incident, we reported the Joe Rowe, Tom Keenan, and Roy Kavanoff. And their solution to that was to put a little, I'd say approximately an inch and a half bump on the edge of the road to try to have a minor, minor curb to keep the water from going into the property. There's two things that are wrong with this. Number one, if a snowplow came along and hit that, it would be gone and wasn't really a full curb. And number two, any water of any storm depth would overflow that particular little curb they put on there and flow into the property. And so I've got damage again. And my concern is twofold. Number one, reparations for the damages. Number two, this is the third time in a matter of a year that we've had flood in the building. And obviously, the dentists and doctors are not pleased about it, and I could lose tenants. On a conversation I had with Roy, he told me that the expense would take months' worth of engineering to do. I could go out there with a orange paint on a spray can and say, put a catch base in here and a manhole there and connect it to the existing storm system. So I don't think that's a real valid excuse. My reason for coming here is to state to the town, I would like to have a permanent solution to what's going on. Presently, on Shirley Street, there is no catch base, zero. And it probably drains about three acres of developed area of apartments and residential. And therefore, you could see why it floods over into my yard. I did pass in some pictures I took and some sketches, and I actually have five more copies if you'd like me to pass them on now or maybe you've seen them already. Has everybody seen those?
No.
Would you like to see it?
If you want to leave them with the clerk, she'll, yeah, she'll make sure that we get copies of them.
So what I am hoping for is a permanent solution to this problem I'm having. And I'm asking the city, if possible.
If you actually just give them to Steve there, he'll see that the clerk gets them. Thank you.
Steve, thank you. And to meet with someone, your engineers, your people on, whoever do road maintenance, and come up with a permanent solution. I'm very concerned about in the winter when we get icing in that minor gutter that we do now have, the water's going to flow into the building on a constant basis. So I've got a major problem, and I'd like some solutions, if possible, from the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. May I ask this question? Will someone perhaps get back to me on this?
Yeah, I mean, just to understand the format, this is just a portion of the meeting where people can come and speak to the board. There's not a back and forth or a give and take at this point. So with your letter, I think at this point with what you have here, if it hasn't been, we'll refer it over to Corp Counsel and see if there's any advice that they have. And someone may get, should get back to you one way or the other with that, so.
Within a reasonable period of time, please?
I'm not going to give you a timeline for any of that. So this is the first that I've heard of it, so I have no idea what the circumstances are, so. But thank you for coming. We'll pass it along, and we'll deal with it as appropriate.
Next speaker from 585 Park Road, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 585 Park Road. Here in support of your agenda items on here tonight, especially the presentation that was just given. I think it's going to be a benefit to the city of Waterbury in working with a lot of Waterbury citizens that would like to, you know, start their own business and open up in the city. That's exactly what we have been doing, you know, here for the last 11 years, trying to keep our people here and be a part of economic development. So I think it's a no-brainer. The other item on the agenda this evening, the water improvements. I am in total support of the item number 11, bond authorization for the water treatment plant and equipment systems renewal. It's just another commitment to repairing our infrastructure. You know, in the city of Waterbury, you see it everywhere you go. We're very lucky to have an administration that's worked with our federal, state, local delegations because, you know, we can't keep kicking the can around any longer. This administration's been committed to our infrastructure. We've made a lot of improvements. We continue to make a lot of improvements. So I would ask that you support that and everything else on the agenda. And thank you very much.
Next speaker from 13 Howard Street, Ty Hernandez.
Hi. I just wanted to give a heads-up that...
Just for the record, if you just state your name and address again, so the clerk will have it.
Sorry, this is my first one.
I know.
Ty Hernandez, 13 Howard Street.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I just wanted to give a heads-up. You know, it's my first meeting. I had a hard time figuring out that the meeting was actually here today. On the website, it shows that it's remote. I came down here on a whim. So just giving the heads-up on that.
Thank you.
That's the last speaker, Mr. President.
Okay. With that, the next item of business would be approval of the minutes for the meeting of Monday, September 19th, 2022. Alderman Bernelli, is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously, and the minutes are approved. I don't see the mayor with us this evening, so with that, we can entertain a motion to refer ourselves into the committee of the whole. Alderman Bernelli?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and we're sitting as a committee of the whole. With that, we're just going to jump ahead for a moment to deal with the item that we just had the presentation on. So we'll take up items eight and 12. And item eight is the American Rescue Plan Act budget transfer within the city's capital improvement fund for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023 in the amount of $1,500,000, which would be the transfer to fund item number 12, which is the actual subrecipient funding agreement. So with respect to item number eight, which is the budget transfer, Alderman Bernelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number eight.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Any of you have any questions? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the transfer or no vote to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously, and the transfer's approved. Item 12 is a subrecipient funding agreement for small business technical assistance and micro grant administration with the Women's Business Development Council Incorporated in the amount of $1,500,000. Alderman Bernelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 12.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously, and the subrecipient funding agreement is approved. With that, we'll return item number one, which is a receiving place on files, letters of resignation from Francis Guerrero from the zoning board and Jared Maislack from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Item two is the request for a new job specification for the Board of Education entitled Assistant School Inspector. Alderman Bernelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number two.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman DiGio Von Carlo?
Is there a salary range yet?
Scott, this is just the approval of the specs at this point, right? The salary range will come later. If we approve the spec, then they'll develop the salary range. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the job specification and no vote to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously, and the spec is approved. Item number three is a request for Mark Levesque, the billing supervisor for the Bureau of Water for refunds totaling $7,662.29 to the following individuals Rivera Severo, Rosa Valdez, Roberta Napolitano, J. and M. Franchette, David Sawicki, Angel Pina, and Jason Akuri. Alderman Bernelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve refunds, item number three.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously, and the refunds are approved. Item number four is an amendment to the professional services agreement with the SLAM Collaborative to provide a long-range facility study plan. Alderman Bernelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number four.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, a yes vote would be to approve and no vote to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously, and the amendment is approved. Item number five is an agreement between the Connecticut Department of Public Health and the city of Waterbury for school-based health center services. Alderman Bernelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number five.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The agreement, the motion passes unanimously, and the agreement is approved. Item six is a state public library construction category two grant for distressed and non-distressed municipalities. Alderman Bernelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number six.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously, and the grant is approved. Item seven is a construction contract for exchange place utility improvements between the city of Waterbury and CJ Fuji Incorporated. And I know Mr. Hyde is here. He's got a quick presentation on what they're doing down there. So let's, we'll go to the presentation, and then we'll go up. And then we'll, then we'll go to the motion. So go ahead.
Thank you. Tommy Hyde, WDC. So many of you remember that we just recently did utility work in streetscaping on East Main Street. This is basically the next phase of that, and we'll cover North Main, South Main, and Bank Street. Things like replacing water mains and laterals, repairing, aligning sewers and laterals, repairing storm sewer, replacing hydrants and fire services of utilities that date back to the 1880s, 1890s. It's a $9.9 million contract, and the funding source is ARPA. Just high level, about 7,715 feet of replacement will be completed under this project. And really, what we've seen in other municipalities throughout the state is when they do make these sort of investments in infrastructure, businesses tend to follow because they know it's there and it's there for a long time. So kind of where we've been, what we're doing, and where we're going. So Eversource has completed the gas mains. We've released the RFP, and we've selected CJ Fuji as the low bidder. Once his contract is approved, we'll start pre-construction and coordination. And most importantly, we'll be able to order the actual piping. Given that every municipality essentially across the country is working on utility upgrades thanks to the stimulus from the federal government, there is long lead times for a lot of these items. And then next year, we expect to replace utilities items. And then next year, we expect to replace utilities on Bank Street and start on South Main Street. And then in 2024, we'll continue on South Main Street and move over to North Main Street. This is going to be a very long-term project with significant traffic impacts to the downtown, but we're working closely in ensuring that those are mitigated as much as possible. And then, right now, we're in the process of finalizing the designs for the streetscape. The goal is to get that RFP out by the end of this year. The streetscape work will follow the utility replacements, so starting on Bank, and then moving to South Main and North Main. It'll look very similar to what you've seen on East Main Street, and includes, you know, bus shelters, streetlights, bike racks, et cetera, with expecting to start next year and finishing up in 2024 as well. Happy to take any questions.
All right. Before we go there, Alderman Brunelli, then with respect to item number seven, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number seven.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Okay, with that, is there any discussion? Any questions? Alderman DiGiovan Carlo?
Will this be enough to finish the project?
Yeah, the contract is 9.9 with CJ Fuji. That'll cover the utility portion of it. We have lots of funding for the streetscape. I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I think it's around the $10 million mark, which pending bids, that should cover it as well.
Thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Lopez?
Thank you for recognizing me. Tommy, quick question. Is this the same company that just completed the East Main project?
No. Dayton, oh, sorry, Guerrero did East Main Street, CJ Fuji did not.
Okay. Was there any work already done on, kind of like the beginning of Bank Street? Or heading into Bank Street from the work previously done?
I'm gonna let Zach handle that up, that's all right.
Thank you.
Oh, this is Zach Keith, he's our project manager from WDC.
Hi, Zach Keith. When Dayton was out there for the utility project for East Main-
I'm sorry, I can't-
When Dayton Construction was out there for the utility project for East Main Street, they had the whole center exchange place dug up. So that's as much as we did for Bank Street, South Main, and North Main so far. They just have to connect where Dayton left off.
Okay, so that was part of the second amendment that we had, think about a year ago, to kind of extend the work into that main middle part of downtown?
The intersection, yeah.
Okay, so this is simply, so now CJ Fuji comes in, and they continue from that point on about half the block down on Bank Street?
From there to the highway for Bank Street, and Phoenix Ave for North Main Street, and Scoville Street for South Main Street.
So it goes all the way to the highway on Bank Street?
Yeah.
Okay, some reason, the pictures, I was looking for the pictures that you included in the document here, and it wasn't as far as the highway. Okay, okay, thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none, then the motion on the table would be to approve the construction contract for the exchange place utility improvements between the city and CJ Fuji Incorporated. Yes vote would be to approve, and no vote to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Item number nine is a receiving place on file, the submission of the city's financial status report for July and August 2022. Item 10 is receiving place on file, it's the submission of a letter from Mayor O'Leary dated September 29th, 2022, indicating his intent to fill restricted and unrestricted appointments to the boards and commissions. Item number 11 is a request for $25 million in the capital appropriation and bond authorization for water treatment plant equipment and system renewal and replacement capital projects. I understand Mr. Langenhour is here with a brief presentation on that as well. Go ahead, did you want to lead off?
Yeah, just quickly, the request this evening is to set a public hearing for your next Board of Aldermen meeting. The request is for a $25 million capital appropriation and bond authorization to be approved. Just quickly on the history, the last bond authorization approved for capital renewal and replacement associated with the water system was back in 2015. At that time, it was for 17.7 million. And Rob Langenhour, since he came on board with the City of Waterbury, he's done an assessment of the systems, the plant, the reservoirs, the dams, and has identified a significant portfolio of work investment that really needs to be made into the water enterprise system in order to maintain the long-term stability and operational efficiency of the various systems to continue to provide, you know, quality water to the residents and businesses here in the City of Waterbury. So as President Panaruski had mentioned, Rob is here this evening to run you through some quick slides of photos of some current conditions, as well as some conditions that would portray the results of investments being made in comparable systems.
Good evening. Really, pictures tell a thousand words, and, you know, for people that aren't in the water business, it's just, I could explain it and get detailed, and wouldn't matter. So 10,000 feet, this is really what it is. So this is our water treatment plant, where we pump 80% of our water to Waterbury, and these are original pumps and motors that are 35 years old, that carry no zero energy efficiency. Currently, we spend roughly $44,000 a month on electricity bill just for the plant. So what's called the variable frequency drive regulates the energy that's needed on the startup of the motor, and we expect to save roughly 25% with the installation of new pumps and new motors. So there's over $100,000 worth of savings right off the bat from what we're doing. And we haven't reaped that benefit yet. Our electric bill last month, which I just got today, was 58,000. 38 of it was just at the plant. You know, so it's amazing. Another water company where I worked for before has a comparable water plant. They do 14 million gallons a day, and it's all gravity, and their electric bill's zero because it's all gravity. So just to try to tell you a little bit comparative somewhere else. Come on. Here we go. This is Hitchcock Storage Tank, and when I say it's close to the condominiums, it's close to the condominiums. So it's about 33 feet away from the condominiums. So somehow, we let condominiums build around 120-foot-tall storage tank that now has PCBs in it, as you can see from the other photo. It's rusted, it's scaling, the walls are thin, and it's pretty telling on what needs to be done. So there has to be cleanup, very difficult to get at. And we did purchase property that you approved months ago adjacent to it. So the plan would be to knock this tank down after we build on the other site. We put a tank up, we build it, and then we knock this down and remediate the site. This is a prototype of what the tank, new storage tank on that site would look like. It's an elevated storage tank, and would use half the water. So that tank is a 1.5 million gallon of water. This elevated tank is only 750,000, so it would improve the water quality as well. This was Thomaston Avenue. This is about a couple months after I started. That was from September. That was the break, and that is the 42-inch water main on Thomaston Avenue, which has suffered a few breaks in it in the past few years, from what I understand. That was me out there. And that is reinforced rod, and what happens is a hole gets started, and the rods start to break, and they ping, ping, ping like spaghetti, and you have a devastating water main break. So the plan is to slipline it, is to put a pipe within a pipe. And we would choose to use the sliplining process because the savings on working on a state road, if you did an open cut, open trench, the paving and restoration costs would be probably quadruple. I would expect that the state would require you to pave curb to curb, all concrete back. So the plan is to do 18 jacking and receiving pits, where we have enough room to get the pipe in, and then pull 1,000 feet. So for the project that we would ask for, we would probably need four or five jacking pits for the area that we're looking for in the urban area. So the plan is for us to slipline through the urban sections of Thomaston Avenue before it goes to the rural end, where honestly, the water that shot up there hit back about 150 feet and hit the building behind. And thankfully, there wasn't a home there, because I really don't think that home would have been there and still standing. This is Blackman Storage Tank, and this is very critical to our water system. The tank needs to be rehabbed, and we could rehab it and probably spend a million and a half to $2 million. The problem is, is we can't take this tank offline because it can't come offline, because it sits on the system and serves water pressure and fire flows to the southern half of the city. So the difficulty is, how do we go rehab this? So the plan is to build two tanks on site. Build a storage tank, a million-gallon storage tank, knock this tank down, and then build a second million-gallon storage tank on that same site. So in the future, we can rehab tanks, take one offline, you still have a million gallons. So we have a little foresight into the future. And this would be an example of, you know, one of the new storage tanks that would take its place. This is North Main Street Pump Station. I think I alluded to it maybe in the letter that I wrote, that we have to get a backhoe and put the backhoe through the front door to move equipment, and try to get inside of it, because we have no other means or methods to do any work there. And you can see the gas meters right to the left of the door. And inside, this is what it looks like inside with the piping and the confines of a downstairs spiral staircase. Not a whole heck of a lot that anybody can really do to make this more efficient. So the plan is to build a new site on the little small portion of Reagan Elementary School, which we've already gotten approval through the Board of Education. And we take up a small snippet of land there and put a new water pump station on that site. It's about 300 or 400 feet up the road on the right-hand side. This is Hamilton Pump Station. Again, you can see the narrow door. There's no way to get in and out of it, very difficult to move a pump in and out. And then this is the downstairs of the pump station itself, which, you know, a nice coat of paint spruces it up, but you can kind of tell from the walls that it's kind of dated. And this is our sludge lagoons at the water treatment plant. Little difficult to see, but that long brown bag in the back is called the GO2, and that's where all the wastewater sludge, which has to be dried out, is captured in those GO2 bags. These lagoons are full, very difficult to keep them, the sludge material dried and processed. Very expensive to move. The sludge needs to be dried at least 30%, and we can't get it to 20% when it was originally there through this system. So we have to do an expansion of the sludge lagoon to be able to remove the sludge, which we process up to about 500 tons a year. And this is the Wigwam Dam, the face of the dam, and you can kind of see the spalling of it on the face of it. All that white is, you know, deterioration of that dam face, and it needs to be rehabilitated. And this has kind of been in the works for a couple years, but I think we need to re-engineer it and do a little bit more work than what was originally in the scope. And this was the chemical building before the treatment plant went online in 1987. And when the new treatment plant was built and went online, the chemical building still sits there today in that condition. It's an ISO, obviously a haven for, you know, kids to have a good time, and there are neighbors that are across the street. And quite frankly, when we went inside and we pulled the boards off, there were still chemicals in there. So we had to get those removed. So we had carbon, powder-activated carbon pallets of it, and it just sat there. So that's what we ended up doing. Now we'd like to knock that building down and clean it up and get rid of that ISO. And this is our wastewater pumps in the base of the treatment plant. This pumps up to the lagoon. This is critical for our operation, and you can kind of see that these pumps are past their prime. We had included them in our pumps and motor project where we were going to replace all the pumps, but money being what it is, you can only go so far. So we had to remove some things, this being less critical. But these are some things that are certainly on the table. And these are valves that we pretty much operate on a daily basis. They're in the reservoir gatehouses. They allow the water to come in from the reservoirs, and then we fill a wet well, and the water flows to the plant. And these are freshwater mussels. These are, the water that's dripping is the leak. So the one valve that's leaking from the bonnet is leaking about 15 feet above the smaller gate, and that's kind of the condition at the pitch reservoir. And this is the Vivian Storage Tank, and you can see, you know, I think, you know, a lot of the pockmarks there aren't helpful. A lot of times, they're BB guns and things of that nature, and they put a little dent through the paint, and that's where you're going to have all your leaks from, and it needs to be rehabilitated. That's a 400,000-gallon tank. And this is typical of what I found in my assessment. This is Cloth Road. So what we did is, we built a brand-new tank behind it, and we left the old tank standing there. So obviously, the old tank was in poor condition, and it doesn't get any better with age. The rust gets worse, and it's in a residential neighborhood. So the fear is, as you can see, somebody's got to take it down. So we're in the process now of actually, we have a contract, Stanford Wrecking, we're in the process of taking it down. But these are the things that we can't make these same mistakes in the future. So the investment is into the water infrastructure to not have this happen. 15 years later, at a cost of how much more if we did it in 2008. So we've cost ourselves more money just by thinking we're saving money. And these are the cone valves at the Cairns Reservoir that we replaced. And we had, if you're wondering, we have 220 days of water supply left remaining out of 400-day supply, and the drought was probably the worst drought we've seen in, you know, 20, 30 years. And we have new cone valves there to be able to get at our 3 billion-gallon water supply in the Cairns Reservoir. And honestly, we never had an issue. I don't want to say that too loud, but, you know, it was one of those things. We have a very robust supply, and if we're able to operate the system like we should, this is how things should work. And this is a typical pump station that you'd see. We have two different pumps with two different motors and two different pumps, and nothing matches up. We can't have replacement parts. So there's nothing that's the same. So the idea is to standardize, so that we can take one pump or motor and replace something across the city. And this is the tight quarters of a pump station that people have to work in and move, and you figure, how's two guys going to, how's two utility workers going to try to get inside to do any work, or change a valve, or do anything? It's very difficult. And this would be a new station, where these would be the new pumps. You'd kind of see how spaced out they are. It's clean, it's neat. And these are vertical pumps as opposed to horizontal pumps, and this is what's out there, a whole lot easier to operate. So you kind of see the before and after. And that's it. I appreciate your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask. But I just wanted you to see the condition of the infrastructure. And there are some other things that are out there that, you know, I'd love to be able to show them to you, but, you know, I appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you. So the request tonight is simply to set the public hearing for October 24th. I would suggest at 6:50 PM. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the public hearing is set for the 24th at 6:50 PM. Item 13 is a contract with Morris and McDaniel for firefighter civil service promotional examinations in the not-to-exceed amount of $101,976.25. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve item number 13.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, let me finish this one, and we'll be back. So the motion is for the, is there any discussion? Hearing none, then a yes vote would be to approve the contract for the civil service promotional exams, and no vote to disapprove. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the contract is approved. Just for clarification, did we vote on item number seven? Item seven? That was the contract for utility improvements, right? We did a motion, and we did, okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we already took care of it. So, all right. The next item would be refunds for tax overpayments in the amounts of $41,655.83. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion?
Motion to approve refunds.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the refunds are approved. With that, Alderman Brunelli, I'd entertain a motion to return to the regular order of business.
So moved.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, we're back in the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item one is on consent to receive and place on file. Item two is on consent to approve. Item three is on consent to approve. Item four is on consent to approve. Item five is on consent to approve. Item six, consent to approve. Item seven is on consent to approve. Item eight, on consent to approve. Nine is a receiving place on file. 10 is a receiving place on file. Item 11 is on consent to have a public hearing on October 24th at 6:50 PM. Item 12 is on consent to approve. Item 13 is on consent to approve. And the Stanley Committee refund for tax overpayments is also on consent to approve. Alderman Brunelli, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as read.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion having been made and seconded, is there any discussion, or any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously, and the consent calendar is approved. With that, we're done with our regular business. I just want to note two things. That yesterday was Mayor O'Leary's birthday, so we wish Mayor O'Leary a happy belated birthday. And yesterday was Jeff Hunter's anniversary, so we wish him and his wife many, many more happy years together. I assume they're happy years together. So with that, is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli?
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Lopez?
I second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned. We'll see you all on October 24th. Thank you.